Good evening, my name is Robyn Muir. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I welcome you to this evening's primary forum for County Commissioner District Number Three. This webinar will be recorded by both the League of Women Voters Kitsap and BCAT, and will be accessible through our website at LWV-Kitsap.org. And on BCAT, July 17th, 24th, and 31st at 10:30 a.m., BCAT can be found on Comcast's Channel 12 and Waves Channel 3. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes political parties or candidates. The League does take positions on matters of public policy and advocates for those positions after careful study. Formed in the 1920s as an outgrowth of the women's suffrage movement, the League's purpose was and is to this day to educate and inform citizens so that they may more fully participate in our democracy. As a membership organization, we depend on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage everyone to become members and help us work on the League's basic tenet, which is that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We would like to begin by acknowledging that our homes and gathering places in present-day Kitsap County are within the ancestral territories of the Suquamish and Skalim peoples who have lived here in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington's Salish Sea for thousands of years. Here, the Suquamish and the Skalim live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855 and by the Point No Point Treaty of 1855. So, joining us this evening are the candidates for Kitsap County Commissioner District Number Three. We have Josh Hinman, Laomi Preciado-Lagde Mayo, Katie Walters, Jeff Wallace, and Axel Strickland. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. All candidates will be given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. Following the opening remarks, I will ask questions that have been submitted in advance by the public. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will then have a minute and a half to make closing remarks. Please keep an eye on the digital timer. If time expires before you finish speaking, please finish your sentence and yield the floor. Each of you has our thanks for stepping up and running for elected office. We know it's not an easy task. Please be respectful of each other, refrain from personal attacks, and address your remarks to the moderator or the audience. So, our opening statements will be given in the order that the candidates appear in the Voters Guide, and then when I ask questions, we'll rotate who goes first each time. We get on that? All right. First, an opening statement will be Josh Hinman.
Well, good evening, my name is Josh Hinman. I'm running for Kitsap County Commissioner District Three. I'm running because I love where I live. Kitsap has become our family's home. I grew up in nearby Tacoma. We've chosen to raise our kids here. We want to retire here. We've made some of our best of friends in Kitsap. However, over the last few years, things have become increasingly difficult. The challenges that our community faces are, I think, larger than they've ever been. Homelessness, lack of affordable housing, crime, mental health and drug addiction are becoming commonplace in Kitsap. Families are fearful for their kids' safety. Law enforcement feels not able to do their job to the fullest extent. We need revised approaches to housing and affordable rentals. I think we've had a history of more career politicians. I think we're looking for community leadership, somebody who's willing to put in the time and the effort and energy to bring Kitsap together. I have leadership skills in both the business and the nonprofit sector. I've run multimillion-dollar companies with lots of employees. I run small nonprofits. I've done small business coaching, and I've traveled the nation doing large nonprofit development work, coaching nonprofits all around the country. But there's something special about Kitsap that continues to draw me back home here. We love it, and I want to invest in its future. I believe I'm somebody who can bring together the skills I learned in business and nonprofit to bring actionable solutions to the big problems that we're experiencing in our community. The challenges are too big for one person to try to solve it. It's going to take all of us doing it together. And that's why I'm asking Kitsap to step up as one, and together Kitsap, I think we can accomplish great things.
Thank you. Next will be Katie Walters.
Get off mute. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for putting together this evening's forum and to everyone watching from home. I am seeking the office of Kitsap County Commissioner because I care deeply about Kitsap and our future. Our family has been in Kitsap for five generations, with deep ties to the shipyard, and I have lived here for over 30 years. And I feel it's the best place to raise a family, and I want others to have that same opportunity. I've worked in nonprofits and education for over 30 years. I'm currently the Executive Director of Leadership Kitsap, and I've been in the unique position to work with our community's private, public, and nonprofit leaders to create positive change in Kitsap. I have a broad sense of what's going on in our community and have built relationships with people making our community work. I taught many years at Olympic College and am a strong believer in the power of education to break down barriers to opportunity and to a better life. I helped open Bainbridge Island Museum of Art in 2013 and served as the museum's Communication and Community Outreach Director. I have the experience needed to bring people together to create solutions to some of Kitsap's most pressing issues, such as managed growth, homelessness, public safety, affordable housing, and to ensure that the decision-making process is transparent and inclusive.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wallace.
Hi, my name is Jeff Wallace. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for putting on this webinar. I came from small-town America. I grew up running a sawmill with my dad. I'm very familiar with the interoperations of how county government can affect private business. I'm currently your elected coroner. I came into a coroner's office that was still operating on paper reports, and we had an x-ray machine that didn't work. We had no video surveillance in the building or external to it. We've modernized that entire office in three years, along with converting it to a professionally based medical examiner system that eliminated the elected coroner position in favor of someone with professional qualifications that are actually required by law to be performing the operations of that office. So, that process was expected to take up to six years. We got it done in three. There was no reason to delay that. So, I've been able to develop a good working relationship with the existing commissioners. Even though we don't always agree, we are able to find a common ground and be able to get things moving forward. I intend on bringing that with me to the office of Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strickland.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and address the Women's League of Voters. My name's Axel Strickland. I'm running for the Central Kitsap County Commissioner position. I'm a 30-year resident of Kitsap, along which time I've lived in all three of the districts, and I currently reside in Seaback. I hold a degree in Business Administration. I've spent most of my career operating private sector, large companies in and out of Kitsap, and managing hundreds of people in multimillion-dollar budgets. I currently serve as a President of the Vermont Port Commission, representing the central district. I also serve as President of Pudseystown Regional Planning Council as the Economic Development Board, representing four counties. During my time at the port, we've made many accomplishments to our community, recently founding the Gorse Coalition, bringing $4 million to infrastructure, tripled the number of jobs, made significant sustainability improvements at the airport. Today, we face many significant challenges in Kitsap. The unhoused is at epidemic levels. Crime is at all-time high. Public safety is at risk. Growth, we're experiencing growth at record rates. We need to address our growth in such a way as to respect our environment and maintain the quality of life that we enjoy. As County Commissioner, I will address these issues, work strategically and effectively, listening and addressing our community's needs. I'll be decisive, and we will take on these challenging topics in an effort to keep Kitsap our home that we love and enjoy.
Thank you very much. And, Laomi Lagde Mayo, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here with us today. I really want to stress the importance of you showing up for your community and for being a part of democracy because without your voices and your own experiences, we will never be able to come up with the solutions that equitably serve all of us as one. I myself have experienced homelessness and depression here in Kitsap County, and I know that through my privilege of my education and my connections with neighbors that cared for me, that I was able to overcome those crises that a lot of our neighbors and vulnerable community members are facing today. As a person who has faced homelessness, I have dedicated the past couple of years to making sure that we get the equitable funding available and needed and required for us to be able to make a solution that works for all levels in all of our county. As a person who has worked in partnership with the National Alliance to End Homelessness with the Washington Home Low Income Homeless Alliance, and as well as various organizations throughout the state, as Board President of United Pearson Washington, I have collaborated with various organizations to make sure that Kitsap County does get the representation that it needs to be able to create the solutions that we're looking forward in the future. As your next County Commissioner, I strive and will work towards making sure that we have affordable, low-income housing because what's affordable for some of us right now is not affordable or attainable to long-term Kitsap County residents that call this home. I will also make sure that we have equitable infrastructure and making sure that we have our fully funded social service programs to keep Kitsap moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to start asking questions. These were submitted through our website, and what I'll do is then rotate. So, each time, a different one, a person will go first. And the first question is, what qualifications and experience do you bring to the position of Commissioner? And what do you think separates you or distinguishes you from the other candidates? And Ms. Laomi, you will go first, please.
Thank you so much for the question. I'm the only person of color here who is running as a candidate for County Commissioner, which there in itself already starts to impact and allow us to add other experiences to the story. Not only that, I'm also a renter. I also use public transportation. I myself don't own a car. I work as a certified peer counselor. So, all of the issues that are being confronted in our community right now, I have an invested interest because I have experience and have worked in our community to make sure that everyone gets treated correctly. I know the system inside and out as not only a person who has received services from Planned Parenthood, from Kitsap Mental Health, and Kitsap Peninsula Community Services, that I know what the barriers and the pitfalls that a lot of our members start to face due to their intersectionality or just because they come from marginalized communities. So, with that experience, I'm able to impact and bring other voices to the table.
Thank you. Katie Walters, please. See if we unmute.
There we go.
There we go.
I have 10 years of senior executive experience that I bring to the role, and I've built and grown nonprofits. I served six years on the Kitsap Regional Library Board as President, as well as overseeing $16 million budget and building two libraries. I'm most proud of the opening of the recent Silverdale Library. I was part of a small group that helped through the grassroots effort about 2012 to get that started again, that idea. I helped raise the $15 million to build Bainbridge Island Museum of Art. And part of that, I lobbied with the state legislature for building for the arts, for arts and education. I think I have that experience because it's going to take more than three commissioners to get a lot of our infrastructure problems taken care of. We're going to need to work at the state and federal level as well. I also have experience as a professor at Olympic College and great relationships there. I think there's going to be a lot of work that we need to do with workforce development in the future.
Thank you. Jeff Wallace.
As I said, I started out in private enterprise. I was raised in a family mill. So, I know the ins and outs of both environmental protection and how it relates back to running a business and how government interacts with that and can either influence it positively or negatively. On top of that, I've been involved in the fire service at all levels, including being a fire chief for seven years. I've spent 37 years in the fire service, 28 as a paramedic, and most recently, I'm your elected coroner of Kitsap County. And I've proven that I can come in and, you know, for lack of a better term, take care of business. There were lots of things that needed to be fixed. I'm a person of action, and I'm able to develop the relationships working with others, especially the other commissioners, to address things that need to be fixed and come up with a plan and actually execute it and get that taken care of.
Thank you. Axel Strickland, I'm going to get it.
Thank you, thank you, Rob. So, to answer your question, first of all, my experience in the private sector, as well as my elected experience in budgeting and respecting the taxpayers' dollars really gives me the solid foundation, the basis, and wish to operate well in this particular position. My current role, my current role, I interface and work closely with many of our current municipalities and other electives from Port Orchard to Bainbridge Island at large, as well as many legislators. I have the relationships and the experience to navigate the political arena that we all serve in today in the effort and ability to get things accomplished. I bring leadership, and I bring proven results to the position.
And Josh Hinman.
Thank you, Robyn. I spent 10 years in big business. I've spent 12 years in nonprofit. Throughout that entire experience, I've been somebody who's been able to bring people together to accomplish big things. But my skills aren't simply in management, they're in leadership. I've had a history of being able to galvanize leaders around ideas to be able to move people into action and to be able to get things done. For the last three years, I've served on the County Budget Committee, which is the number-one policy document that the county manages. It's $467 million. Everything intertwined with one another, and you have to understand it well to be able to understand how the priorities can be set and how funding can be moved from one area to another. I have legislative experience. When I was a foster care director, we started the Washington Association for Children and Families, of which I was a founding board member. We advocated the legislature on behalf of children and families in our community that they would have the tools and the resources they need to be able to thrive. This will be my sole job. This is something that I want to give my life to and my passion to because I believe in Kitsap.
Thank you. Next question. What do you consider to be the biggest challenge facing Kitsap County in the next four years? Katie Walters, you will go first.
Oh, I feel like the biggest challenge that we're going to face in the next year, four years, is going to be managing the growth that we're going to be seeing. I think we're already seeing it, and I think that's going to be something that is going to be something that we need to look at. I know right now, just at the street from me, there's 1,500 homes being built and all the infrastructure that's going to be needed to mitigate all the traffic, the environmental concerns. And what's this going to look like? Right now, the growth, the... I lost my train of thought. The... To pay for it, the growth has to pay for growth. Right now, it's coming out. The infrastructure is getting paid for after occupancy, and that seems backwards to me. So, we're going to need to figure out what all this is going to look like and have it in place first.
Thank you. Jeff Wallace.
I think the biggest issue facing Kitsap County in the next four years is going to be public safety, and that's just, it's all-encompassing. It comes down to providing housing opportunities for building and growth, making sure that our infrastructure is built for not only our current needs but is projected out to the future so that we're not having to continually reshore it up, put on more Band-Aids. We need to ensure that we are actually providing in our public safety arena through law enforcement and our roads, that we are actually building those structures out so that they will not only support our growth but have a plan for continued growth in those areas so that we are not trying to play catch-up like we're doing now.
Thank you. Axel Strickland.
Thank you, Robyn. Biggest challenge is the next, in the next four years, is going to be manage our growth in Kitsap in such a way that we can continue to respect our environment and everything that we love about Kitsap without resulting in urban sprawl. So, good planning. We need to maintain and grow our economy so families can not only live here but also work here in Kitsap. We need to look at the level of unhoused today. We need to reduce the level unhoused while making our community safe again. And our infrastructure needs continued attention. Many times, growth outpaces the infrastructure that we have set earlier years, and we need to continue to focus on strengthening our infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like everybody else, it's growing responsibly. Jobs, housing affordability, crime, parks, they're all a part of that process. If we don't figure out what it's going to look like in the next 10 years to grow responsibly, the community's going to get harder and harder to live in. Right now, we have shipyard workers and nurses and teachers, blue-collar employees who can't afford a place to live because we have not had enough growth that has kept up with the growth of the economy and the growth of people moving to Kitsap. Right now, it's estimated that we're 7,000 housing units short of what we need today, and that need is getting bigger and bigger as time goes on. We need to figure out how young people can afford to buy a house. We need to figure out how we have the infrastructure that supports that growth. We need to give property owners the ability to build an ADU or a cottage on their property to be able to help us with the housing problem. But housing affordability and jobs are going to be the number-one thing that we need to focus on over the next four years. And along with that, we'll have to address needs like crime and homelessness.
Thank you. Laomi, Lagde Mayo, please.
Thank you so much for the question. The biggest issue that we will be confronting the next four years is quality of life, and predominantly is the housing crisis that we are currently experiencing. I was the first one to say that housing is a human right, and I believe in the science behind the Housing First model. And I'm so thrilled to hear that other people are also understanding what this evidence-based practice is and making sure that we do create enough housing availability for everyone here that calls Kitsap County home, specifically the long-term members that have called this community their home and have had their roots for such a long time and are looking and having to move outside of this county. I myself am fortunate enough where I am able to afford my own place. So, looking at the whole infrastructure of what it looks like to have equitable housing, specifically increasing affordable, low-income housing for those vulnerable community members that don't really have the resources to be able to afford housing currently as it stands because of the rising rent increases and just the unaffordability of buying a home.
Thank you. Next question. How would you rate Kitsap County's response to its homelessness problem over the past two years? What more would you like to see done to end homelessness in our area? First will be Jeff.
The response has been less than adequate, and it's a changing playing field. There was a Supreme Court ruling on public camping. We need to have places for these people to go. Everybody needs someplace to go to. And again, it's a matter of catch-up. This isn't something that we just create out of thin air. So, we need to be investing in areas where people can go where their basic needs are met. Sanitation, where we can be able to have meals for them, where they can get access to transportation so that they can get other services to other services that we're not able to bring to them. So, it's again something that requires a community effort. It's not something that's going to be fixed by a board of three people. This is something that is going to take our entire community and all sectors to address this in a timely fashion and in an appropriate fashion so that we're keeping people's human dignity intact as well as giving them the services they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our response to homelessness in the past two years has been a bit slow, I would say. It has not been as quickly responsive as it should have been. With that said, there's no magic wand that's going to fix our issue overnight. But what we do need to do, we need to pull all of our communities together. We need to pull all of the resources together. There are a lot of people trying to do a lot of good things. Some people are making sandwiches at the church and delivering to people in need. We have people giving housing or beds in cool weather and inclement weather when they are needed. But we don't have a cohesive, strong plan countywide where we have united all of these agencies together. So, my suggestion is that we pull up all the agencies. We work cohesively together. In addition to that, I would support an outreach person that is assigned to each county of our region, all three counties. We have two currently, in which to identify those individuals that are need and offer them and direct them to the proper support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Right now, we have 1,021 households that are literally homeless. There's 414 kids and teenagers that are without permanent resident address. 60% to 70% of that is a result of substance abuse or mental health. 30% to 40% is a result of poverty, rising house prices, and other issues. We're spending more money than we've ever spent combating homelessness. There's 55 organizations and programs in Kitsap County currently using. And there are people who actually go out in each area, and they do talk with those folks. That's where those statistics come from. The Department of Commerce has released a report that says for every $100 increase in rent, it becomes a resulted increase in homelessness by 6% to 32%. We have to change the way we're approaching it. It's obvious if you drive by Walgreens in Silverdale or many of our parks that our approach is not working. There are national best-practice models, Housing First in Houston. They have 60% of their homeless by, at the start of COVID to now. 25,000 people got a home. Housing First is an incredible model. It's something that we can do with wraparound case management and have an extreme effect on the number of homeless in our community.
Thank you.
As a person who has experienced homelessness here in Kitsap County, I myself know firsthand how difficult it is to be able to attain stable, affordable housing that then can be a springboard to success. I believe that us as a county and a community can do a lot more for those who are most vulnerable, and we can begin by de-stigmatizing these situations that people just experience. A lot of times, and now more so than ever, we're starting to see that full-time employees are starting to experience homelessness due to the increasing cost of rent and due to the unaffordability of housing. So, we need to be able to do more and making sure that we are creating solutions on every single level. But keeping in mind that, at the end of the day, the person who is experiencing homelessness is human, and which they deserve the respect and dignity and the compassion and empathy from us to be able to create the solutions that not only get to the root of the issue but assist them in making sure that they can then come back to the community and never have to second-guess their worth or value or their purpose here within Kitsap County.
Thank you. And Katie.
Well, what we can do to address homelessness. Our, our neighbors are experiencing homelessness and living in county parks and other property, public property. And I believe this needs the county's immediate attention. The 2022 point in time count estimated that there were 183 unsheltered and 393 individuals living in transitional housing or emergency shelters. And I do support what the county is currently doing where they have enacted ways to reach out to, with the, with the heart coordinator to reach out to these citizens and offer them services and employment and oper- not employment, but services, opportunities. And I think part of that does need to be employment. I have looked at some other counties like in San Francisco has a model for enhanced shelters. And so enhanced shelters would have low barrier entry that would welcome people with partners and pets and position possessions as long as, along, excuse me, as long, along with wraparound care. And that went past.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to switch topics. Traffic in Kitsap County is becoming more and more of an issue. This is especially true during weekends with people traversing the county to get to the Olympic Peninsula. What strategies would you propose to mitigate, mitigate, I'm sorry, traffic snarls countywide? And first will be Axel.
Thank you, Robin. So if you go and you look at our key corridors coming in and out of the county as we travel from Pierce through Kitsap onto the Olympic Peninsula, we have several corridors that need attention. Obviously, the Gorse Corridor is one. As we go up north toward Pauls Bow, that interchange is another one. And then again, as we get toward the Hood Canal Bridge, that's another corridor. All these corridors are aged in their infrastructure, and we need to address these corridors, each one, and continue to strive forward to make them safe and resilient. I'm already doing that work. Last year, I was instrumental in acquiring $74 million from the legislature transportation budget in which to address the Gorse Corridor to address not only safety but also resiliency. And that is the kind of work we need to continue to do in our county is to address these corridors to make them safe and resilient.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, trafficking Kitsap is an issue. If you leave the shipyard, it's hard to get through Gorse. It's, but public transportation is probably the number one thing that we can do to help affect it. We have a public transportation system that has made extreme headway over the last few years. They are better than they were when I moved here, but we have a lot of room to grow. They say that in order to have public transportation be most effective for people in our community, it needs to be able to run every 15 minutes. Currently runs every 20. It's not available on Sundays. Many areas of our community actually can't get access to the bus for, because they live too far out or take, or runs only every hour where they live. So investing in appropriate public transportation dollars is one way that we can affect it. We are thankful for many of the senators and legislators who did a lot of the work in our community with the Gorse study that's going to happen. Now, that will help alleviate traffic snarls in the future. But the number one thing that I think we can do is invest into public transportation.
Thank you. Naomi.
Public transportation will be the future. There are any other places that we can add roads in our county as it stands, specifically in Gorse, and we need to be able to make sure that we are making smart, efficient, effective moves so that way everyone has an equitable chance to be able to get around through the county. As a certified peer counselor, I work with people who experience homelessness or have very low income, and they themselves have told me what a barrier it is for them to be able to attend their appointments, to get across the Puget Sound, to receive the appropriate care that they need because of the fact that transportation is very limited. We need to be making sure that anytime that we create these plans, that we always have the most vulnerable as our focus and as our center, because those are the people that are really going to benefit. If we assist and invest in our community and assisting the ones that need to help the most, then we all flourish and grow from that. As I said, I'm the only one that writes public transportation as my main means of transportation. So being able to add Sunday service and making sure that ferries are also running through our Bremerton Ferry Terminal are the highest priorities for me.
Thank you. Katie.
Well, to mitigate traffic snarls, I think the main thing is to keep traffic moving. I am a big fan of roundabouts, and they've been successful. So that's part of it for what we existing. But I think looking to the future, we do need to invest more in public transit and not just buses, but also ferries, ferries that are connected to bus lines. And just speaking, just today with Kitsap Transit, I know one of the issues is just workforce and encouraging those to take jobs to be bus drivers and to work in the trades. And what can we do to encourage people to go into those careers? And I know that Kitsap Transit actually trains their workers. So I think a lot of it has to do around communication and reaching out to potential and potential people because we need people to drive those buses, drive the ferries and for, for people to see those as a career path, and that's how we can un-snarl Kitsap.
Thank you. And Jeff.
Public transportation, I think, is one of the bigger short-term answers. We also need to be investing in more infrastructure for public transport. We are to the point now where we need to start looking at more efficient ways of moving people than buses. Light rail should start being looked at. We also have a major traffic snarl that's often overlooked between Pauls Bow and Bainbridge Island. That bridge is the only thing that connects Bainbridge Island to the mainland. So we need to be investing in more resilient infrastructure that's serving the north end of our county as well. And with Gorse, we need to be looking at a complete rework. That road was something that was conceived most likely out of easiest access back when it was put in. We've been putting Band-Aids on the Gorse Access for the 20 years I've been in Kitsap, and none of them are long-term. They are all minor fixes. We need to be looking at long-term fixes that not only support today's needs but are looking forward to our future growth as well.
Thank you. Next question. Would you support and/or propose expansion of public transportation in Kitsap County? How can we attract more users to public transportation? Getting cars off the road is the, I think, idea behind that question. And first is Josh.
Yes, I would support more investment in the public transportation. I think one of the ways that we can encourage it is a lot of, you know, when you, when you think of through some of the bigger issues that come alongside public transportation, parking for shipyard workers. You know, how do we create opportunities for that? So some infrastructure there. And so even getting incentives to companies to be able to use public transportation to increase ridership, offer opportunities for corporations. There is some of that that currently exists. We see the shipyard use it incredibly well. But being able to expand those opportunities, if you're an individual, could you get a credit if you choose to go to public transportation versus driving your car? I think there's some of those opportunities where we can partner together with our businesses to create more opportunity in our community.
Thank you. Naomi.
I would absolutely also agree in terms of making sure that we fully fund our transportation. Just in fact, because of the fact that it not only affects our health, but it also affects our environment. Better transportation is the future in terms of making sure that we do create a lower impact on our environment, specifically since we do have a lot of shorelines, the longest shorelines anywhere in any county here in the Washington state. We need to make sure that when we are creating public transportation, we are working with programs like Move Ahead Washington to be able to assist ridership in, in giving free ridership to our youth. As we've worked with state legislator and making sure that our Washington state ferries are free for our youth, that is one way to make, make it attainable for people as, as a way of not only assisting them getting around through the county, but also making sure that we are cognizant that a lot of people here who use those services already have very limited means and income to be able to pay for all of these transportation needs that they are required to take to attend their services.
Thank you. Katie, please.
Yes, I absolutely support expanding public transit. Part of that, I think, is also expanding where our transit centers are. I know they just recently broke ground on a transit center next to the hospital, which is so vital because when people leave the hospital, they need to be able to get back home if they are using, are public transit users. Also, I support the legislature that they just made it so that kids ride free on buses and in on, on the ferries. My son is a great user of the Orca card, and so I think encouraging and giving incentives to employers to use to make use of things like that so that people are encouraged to take public transit and get, it's just, it's better for the environment. It's, it's better to keep people, get people moving on the roads. And so, yes, I, I again, I support the expansion of public transit.
Thank you, Jeff.
I also, like everybody else, export, definitely support expanding public transit. We need to make it more convenient. We need to make it more robust, and we need to make it seven days a week. So then people will actually be encouraged. They can rely on it. And we need to also encourage our state legislature to make sure that where we interface, particularly at the ferries, is appropriately funded, so it's reliable as well. We can't do one without the other specifically with our geographic location. So we can make ours much more robust. We need to encourage them to make theirs much more robust as well. And I encourage also giving credits for free ridership for youth, back and forth to schools, back and forth to school events for family and youth so that we can help keep that impact as low as possible.
Thank you, Axel.
Yes, thank you. Kitsap Transit continues to improve on an annual basis. They do a fair job in our county, but there's obviously areas of improvement. We need to have more consistent schedules, schedules that are much more held on a timely that people can count on them. We need to encourage transit use as well as using park and rides that we have, are recreating, and there are still some park and rides being created that are planned in the next two years. We need to support transit and transit access for our senior communities. Oftentimes, they have difficulty navigating sidewalks and streets. We need to make that access for the seniors a priority. Ferries have been a problem throughout our region. Many of our, are like to talk about ferries, but to now we have not united as a region of Kitsap. And I believe that we need to unite as a region of Kitsap, all the way from Port Orchard to Bainbridge Island, work strong with our legislators and the ferry service and ensure that we have calculated and concise, consistent ferry service.
Thank you. Next question. What type of support for small businesses while they are recovering from the pandemic would you support? Naomi.
So one of the things that I would absolutely support is those grants that were given out in, in emergency cases to make sure that small businesses were able to stay afloat and be able to pay for their employees and making sure that their own livelihood was, was safe, kept safe. So I am definitely for any program that would be able to assist our small businesses, which is the, the, the heart and soul of our economy, our, our local businesses that we definitely need to support. So any type of grants that we would be able to attain through partnerships with the state or nationally, which is one of the biggest areas of opportunities that I see is being able to advocate for our county appropriately to be able to get the funding that would then be able to assist our small businesses that we have here in Centwood County.
Thank you. Katie.
I think some of the ways that we can assist small businesses that are recovering from COVID is really to support them to shop local and have a, have a campaign along with the, the Greater Kitsap Chamber to support small business. Find out what they need. I think it'd be actually going to the source and talking to our small business owners and seeing what they need. Is there something, is there, are there gaps that the county can, can fill? Are there ways that we can support innovation and new businesses? But again, I think it's really checking in at the source, working with our chambers of commerce and working, well, all the chambers of commerce and working with the small businesses to check in and see what they, they need. Because we have great resources in Kitsap, including the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. There's coworking spaces that are very innovative. So I think again, it's checking in and supporting them shop local and check in with the businesses.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think we need to be present for our small business owners as much as we're present for our larger employers in the county. They have, they're providing extremely valuable services that we, we rely on for not only our economy, but also for our quality and our way of life here in Kitsap. So there are very limited things that county government can do to support small business. Most of that is to be present and provide them with what support that we can, whether that's in terms of increasing our infrastructure, better public transportation, all of the things we've discussed tonight. But we need to be, have an open ear for them as much as we do the folks that are bringing in the bigger employers and the bigger dollars. They're just as important and need to be treated as such.
Thank you. Axel.
Thank you, Robin. Our small business community is one of the, one of the backbones of Kitsap. There are many, many companies and small family businesses here that work every day to make a living for not only their family, but as well as other families in the community. I would, I would support BNO tax relief during the period of recovery, access to small business support. I would look at reviewing and relieving the timelines on small business loans. We need to relieve the pressure on these small businesses. And these are some areas I think in which we could do that during this time of recovery. Partnering with KITA, Kitsap Economic Development Alliance and the chambers to grow these small businesses and promote the use of small business in our community, I think is key. And doing this will retain jobs, will keep people employed, and will continue to keep an economic base.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, I think we all want to support small businesses. I've been a small business coach since moving to Kitsap. I've helped several small businesses in our community thrive. During COVID, I helped many of them secure PPP loans and employee retention credits because the most important thing during COVID was keeping people employed. When people had a paycheck, they were able to continue to feed their family, pay their rent, and be active members of our community. I think we need to bring a trade school, journeyman program, expand that here in Kitsap. Most of my friends who own businesses like plumbers and electricians are looking for employees and they can't hire them. They send them to Renton to get trained, and then the Seattle Union picks them up, and they're left without workers here. We have builders who are looking for employees who are skilled. Other people have said shop local. It's always one of the most important things we can do, and partnering with our chambers and our BNI groups and KITA is a great way to find out where we can do that. Lowering fees for business expansion, especially when it comes to land use and redevelopment and building new buildings. We need to keep that cheap so that businesses can keep their, their products cheaper for us to be able to participate in.
Thank you. Next question. What will you do to ensure open consultation and participation by the public in decision-making? How do you plan to use and select advisory committees? Katie is first with that one.
Well, I think this open conversation with our community is the key to moving forward. And part of it, especially with select advisory committees, I think is, is great. I am, I applaud the Kitsap Public Health District for expanding their board beyond just elected officials to bring in people that are actually end-users. I encourage other organizations like Housing Kitsap to do the same with their board. Because I think getting some people that actually know what's going on in the, in the situation, like with housing, having builders and end-users, people who are using the affordable housing vouchers would be really important to have on those boards to include that voice. I think when we're talking about growth, I think it'd be important to have a, have an expert. So I would love to have Central Kitsap have its own urban planner, but along with that, asking the ports, the tribes, small business owners, citizens, what they want to see as far as moving forward in Kitsap.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do you read the question to me again, please?
I'd be delighted to. What will you do to ensure open consultation and participation by the public in decision-making? And how do you plan to use and select advisory committees?
Thank you. Transparency is the key to any government operation, and we need to make sure that we are, including everybody, COVID has taught us that there are more mediums to be able to reach more people in a productive manner. We just need to make sure that we're acknowledging them. Having simulcast meetings as well as in-person attendance are great. We just need to make sure that we're acknowledging those folks that are joining us electronically. And as far as advisory committees, those need to be an equitable blend of both non-elected and other civic leaders so that we're getting the true makeup of our community so that we are actually getting everyone's needs represented when we're having these advisory committees bring us information so that we can more equitably serve the citizens of the county as a whole.
Thank you, Axel.
Thank you. I think our, our advisory committees are a very important part of Kitsap and the role that they play are extremely important. I would encourage continued public interest. We need the public to get involved in this. Public input is extremely valuable. And I can tell you that electives need to have that strength and support to be connected with our community. Transparency in these organizations is key. Like I had said, encouraging participation and supportive with new and fresh faces that have new, fresh ideas. I think that once you have served on a board for a period length of time, you become not quite as effective as you could be if we had some fresh faces. So again, getting some equitable faces on the boards and encouraging public participation is going to be very key to success as the public becomes and stays involved in the decision-making processes of their community.
Thank you, Josh.
I agree. I think we want to continue to get public involved in decision-making. I think we've had people who have been in politics and political leaders in our community, and it is time to let them go on to other things and for us to bring new flesh, fresh blood into leadership. I think there's a space to have more people at the table when decisions are made. Communication and transparency and accountability are incredibly important to me. You can't achieve all of those if you aren't sitting with people in the community to make decisions. One of the things that the commissioners have done great in Central Kitsap is the CK Community Council. It meets every month. It's a regular time. The community is welcome, and they can submit items to, to be on the agenda. They take that time to inform about things that are happening in Central Kitsap and to keep people involved. But it is a shame when things like the new ordinances get passed that affect the Alala Winery, and they weren't at the table for the decision. We need to do a better job of making sure that when we make decisions as leaders that affect real people in our community, that those people have had an opportunity to have a say in the decision and a seat at the table. Doesn't mean we're always going to do what they want, but it does mean they had a chance to have their voice heard and, and But it does mean they had a chance to have their voice heard and, and, and represented in the decision.
Thank you. Laomi?
Thank you so much for the question. I think first and foremost, we have to be able to define who is the public, right? Because if we keep continuing to, to follow the status quo and we keep going to the same people over and over again, we're never going to be able to accomplish the goals that we want collectively. I myself, as a person of color, that is the reason why I decided to run as county commissioner, because I felt that a lot of the communities that have been marginalized haven't been given the opportunity to be able to express their own experiences and how their own stories have been affected by laws that have been well-meaning or ordinances that have been well-meaning with good intention, but then have a negative, negative impact on their livelihood, on their quality of life. It is really important and indicative for us as a government and us as a community to stop asking people to meet us where we're comfortable at, but allow ourselves to be vulnerable and courageous enough to meet people where they're at. And, and reach those vulnerable communities that really do have an impact and have so much to give into the fabric of who we call ourselves as a community.
Thank you. Next question. Have you been attending Kitsap County Commissioner meetings? What steps have you taken to educate yourself about how the county operates? First up is Jeff.
Yes, I've been to many Kitsap County Commissioner meetings. Um, I actually have to interface with them. I rely on them for the funding for my office and I fully appreciate the fact that the public trust is hard to earn and even harder to keep. So that is part of the entire process. We need to be open and transparent and working with them. It's a matter of give and take. Every time I've had to work with them in initiating new programs and changing the office and improving things that no one in the room left with everything that they wanted when they walked in. So it's all a matter of working what's towards what's best for the community and keeping that in the forefront.
Thank you. Axel?
Thank you. Uh, I have attended county commissioner meetings. Uh, I have visited the county offices many times during my career. Uh, many times recently meeting uh one-on-one with not only county commissioners, with staff members as well. Uh, I serve on several boards that I share with the county commissioners uh in the region at large, which affect land use, transportation, infrastructure. And uh a lot of other various topics uh as well as the unhoused. So um I have a pretty good uh communication. I would say very strong communication with commissioners at this time and in tune with what our county's direction and opportunities are.
Thank you. Um, Josh?
I have attended commissioner meetings in the past. Uh, the most time that I spent with the commissioner that's actually been working on the budget, I was on the county budget committee for the last three years. Uh, it's a $467 million budget. It's the primary policy document that the county manages day-to-day as commissioners. Uh, the second place they spend the majority of their time is on land use and I have had a lot of opportunity to interface with DCD. One of the things I did when I decided to run was to go sit and watch county offices work uh for several hours and just observe how they do things and what the process are. I think it has led me to believe that we have a culture opportunity at the county. We have currently uh a mindset that's more of a, hey, what do you want? Not a mindset of how can I help? How can I make happen what you're looking for? Is there information that you need and how can I help you get where you're trying to be? Whether it's a homeowner trying to build a home or get a permit, whether it's somebody just trying to ask a question. I think we want to model availability. Uh, we want to model friendliness and customer service. I think there's a real opportunity at the county for us to act in a way that the, that the public says, thank you. It was so great to do business here.
Thank you. Laomi?
Thank you so much for that question. Unfortunately, I have not been able to attend any recent county commissioner meetings. And that's due largely in part that the work schedule that I have as a service provider, working 10-hour shifts, it just does not allow me the opportunity to be able to attend those meetings. However, I have worked closely and I have also talked and have several meetings with my commissioner. Uh, thank you so much, Commissioner Ed Wolf, in being able to talk about specific issues like homelessness and also being able to advocate for the cap, uh for the penalty place that was built on west side of Bremerton. That is again, one of the tenants of the housing first model and being able to give housing to our community members that desperately needed to, so that way they're able to then worry about and concentrate on other issues that they might be confronted with. For example, experiences with mental health or substance use, or even just other instances of, for example, domestic abuse or just life in general. So being able to work hand-in-hand with several commissioners has been a pleasure for me and I do look forward to attending others once I'm able to, to have that opportunity again.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Um, the median income in Kitsap County for 2020, according to the Federal Reserve Bank is $76,814. Robin, Katie? Yes?
I didn't get to answer.
Katie, I am so sorry. Thank you for keeping me straight because I need that. Katie, please answer the previous question.
Uh, yes, I have attended Kitsap County Commissioner meetings and a great benefit to the community right now is that all of the meetings are recorded. So even though they've moved now to a in-person hybrid model, you could still go back and watch all of, all of the meetings. And best part, you can fast forward as well. But I've also in the past attended meetings. I was uh for appointments for the Kitsap Regional Library Board as well as for the Kitsap Art Board. And one of the best things, one of the things about Leadership Kitsap is building relationships with a lot of our elected officials, including the commissioners and inviting them in as speakers and building that relationship and, and working with them that way. So uh I've had lots of one-on-one meetings with them as well as offering uh them opportunities to come speak to my Leadership Kitsap class.
Thanks. Thank you, and I apologize. Um, next question. The median income in Kitsap County for 2020, according to the Federal Reserve Bank is $76,814. And that's down from 79,624 in 2019. And the median price of a home is up to $600,000, according to the Kitsap Sun's most recent article. And so it takes a salary of over $82,000 to be able to afford a home in that median price range. In addition to a very large $110,000 down payment. So a person making the median salary in this county cannot afford to purchase the median-priced home. What steps can be taken to ameliorate the situation and what do you, what ideas do you have to provide attainable housing in Kitsap County? And first is Axel.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. So housing in Kitsap has continued to escalate for a number of reasons. Obviously, we have uh, we have the cost of materials skyrocketing. We, we have the cost of labor continuing to grow. Those are areas that we are not going to be affected at the county level or at the, at the state level for that matter. What we need to do is we need to review densities so that developers can feasibly and responsibly develop a piece of land or a housing community in which to keep the development costs down. We also need to look at the impact fees. We need to probably reall back some of the impact fees. The county implemented a 615% impact fee during COVID. This was a very hard hit by the developers and the builders. It also affects the real estate industry. These are some areas that we need to affect. We need to be working closely with our developers to make housing affordable and not get, not put added increases and regulation and costs into the process.
Thank you. Josh?
Thank you so much for the question. It's a great question. Uh, there's a few things that we can do that can affect uh the affordability and super speed permits. Uh, that's one of the ways that we can get developers through the permit process much, much faster. They'll save a lot of money on the cost of money over time. It takes two to three years sometimes to get a development off the ground. Get them a super speed permit where they can get to the hearing examiner in 30 days. They save a lot of money on the development process and then you can ask them to sell or require that they sell 20% of their houses. So for no more than say $400,000. That'll make sure that it can be an owner-occupied unit for the first two years. One of the things that I did with a group of friends, some people thought the place I worked bought it, but myself and a group of friends bought an apartment complex that the county owned, the Poplar Department. We turned it into affordable housing for young adults aged 18 to 28. It's an opportunity for them to live in, in community, but to uh make it a spot that they can afford because we had a lot of parents who said, my kid can't afford to move out. And a lot of kids who said, I really want to move out. And so we came together with a solution to bring uh that to the table for young people in our community.
Thank you. Uh, Laomi?
So $79,000 is the average income, the income for a person here in Kitsap County. I don't know anyone, any close friend of mine, not even myself included, that makes that amount of ma- amount of money. So they're right there in itself. The American dream is unattainable for, for myself and so many people who call Kitsap County home. In, in, in which of itself, we really need to be able to hold accountable the developers that say that they're going to be building low-affordable income housing and then back out at the very last minute. When we're looking at housing solutions, we should be able to incentivize and also be able to ask the developers to set aside low affordable income units for people to be able to purchase them. We also have to be looking at the, at the purchasing that outside companies that are located outside of the state and even outside of the county in itself are, are buying all of these are properties and, and creating a, a inflation in the prices that, that are, we are currently experiencing. There's no reason why housing Kitsap County should be $600,000, point and period.
Thank you. And Katie?
I know the prices right now are through the roof. It's kind of crazy. So my husband and I both bought, we bought our first home when we were 25 and that is definitely not a possibility for my sons at that same age right now. So um I do believe that we can build more in areas that are already planned for des- and density. So encourage incentives for multifamily housing. Encourage more of the middle housing, uh tax incentives, maybe for front-of-line permitting, so we can get like the duplexes and cottage-style homes built faster. I also am a real proponent of encourage upzoning in areas near transit. Bremerton's done a really great job of that, of upzoning your ferries, but also near parking rides. Axel was mentioning a couple of new parking rides being built. Well, that's a great opportunity to uh build apartment buildings near transit. Uh, I think there's creative solutions for some of our non-productive urban land. I think like the mall, there's opportunities to use um the asphalt that is built there. Also, uh, uh, in buildings that already exist, turn some into some housing. I think there's some creative solutions.
Thank you. All right, the next one, we're going to go environmental side of things. Oh, I did it again. Jeff Wallace is next. Failing this evening.
It's okay. No, um, it's a supply and demand issue and Kitsap County is a desirable place to live. I came here 20 years ago, I got hired here 20 years ago. We lived with my mother-in-law for the first two years that I was working up here and had to commute because we couldn't find any place. And then we ended up renting for two more years after that, just because there wasn't any place available. And we finally ended up finding a house in Silverdale that we were just fortunate enough to be able to have some vision to see, to be able to remodel that to suit our needs. The house was built in the 60s. We need to reexamine our zoning so that we can have an appropriate number of places for folks to build and develop and work in coordination with our developers and streamline that process for them to be able to build. It's again, something that's going to take some time. And we also need to be able to encourage accessory dwelling units on property that will help people be able to afford, to be able to get into a place and also have them provide someplace for folks to be able to rent.
Thank you. Um, next question. The city of Eugene, Oregon instituted the Love Food Not Waste Program in 2011. A partnership between the city of Eugene, local waste haulers, commercial compost facilities, local businesses and local real retailers was formed. Collected food waste is turned into compost that is then sold as a 100% recycled product. Profits are distributed among several entities and the program has reduced carbon emissions. What new initiatives would you support to expand composting of food waste in our county? And first is Josh?
Well, I, I've not heard of that program, so it's fun to hear of a great program that does that type of uh, that type of work to reduce waste. So I'd have to educate myself on that some more to be able to understand exactly what they're doing. I think um, you know, there, there's a old study from um oh, I can't remember what university, but it said, you know, even the way in which we recycle is often done in a way that's not eco- environmentally friendly. So now you, the way that we do it, we have two different uh waste bins out in the community. We have two different trucks that drive by. They burn diesel. They spit all sorts of fumes into the economy. The number one way to do it is actually to put it all in one can, take it out to one spot, then you have people sort it. And actually you end up recycling more. You end up actually getting less garbage, less stuff going to a landfill and more things be used. And so I'd love to see that we would uh reform the way in which we do a lot of our trash collection, a lot of our um waste collection, because I think there's a, a huge opportunity to be more environmentally, environmentally friendly inside of that. And I will look into the Love, Love Food Not Waste program. It's great to hear that there's a program like that working.
Thank you. Um, Laomi?
I actually have a sibling that lives in Eugene, so I have heard about this program and it's a great program that will assist us in making sure that we also increase the, the the education behind recycling. I am originally from California, so they had a very robust recycling program in, in terms. So looking into various programs and various ideas that are working outside of our county, outside of our state is very instrumental. It also will reduce our impact on the environment and also assist in, in teaching our young generation how to be able to be mindful about the environment and conservation. And being able to increase the innovation that we could potentially have here in Kitsap Peninsula that will then be able to influence everyone in a positive way. That this is the type of ideas that need to be brought up to the forefront, so that way we can be more proactive in the ways that we look into future issues that we are being confronted now here in the present.
Thank you very much. Um, Katie?
Well, thank you. This is an interesting question because I have also not heard of Love Food Not Waste. But I love the concept of being innovative about, around our waste. Uh, one idea that I've been researching is waste to energy. Spokane has a great waste energy plant where the garbage is res- is incinerated and, and the fumes are, they're, they're filtered. So there's nothing more than steam that goes into the air and then the steam produces energy and actually puts electricity on the grid. And I think that would be a really interesting concept to have something like that come to Kitsap. Because uh also more is recycled when you incinerate it, because more of the metals drop out. I think it's something that could actually be a income generator for us. We could take waste from Mason County, the Navy, from Pierce County. Uh, where, where we put it out, uh, Axel, you can work on with me on this. At the ports, there's already a train there goes there. And it would be a way to reduce waste innovatively as well as put energy back onto the grid.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff?
Uh, I as well am not familiar with the Love Food Not Waste program. However, this is a great example of where we can encourage the private sector to jump into this arena, not only with food, but with anything else for recycling, reusing, that creates more jobs. It provides more employment. It provides entry-level jobs. So this is something that we need to not only look into for food waste, but for anything, so we can expound upon that and get the true benefit for not only the county, but that helps build business and our um workforce as well.
Thank you. Axel?
Thank you. You know, our entire environment here in Kitsap um is top of mind for me and incredibly important that we maintain the environment and obviously a healthy, sustainable matter. Uh, when I was running shopping centers, we had already started several years ago in separating our food waste, uh organic waste from hard garbage. And those dumpsters would be taken to waste management uh and put on rail as all the trash leaves this county on rail, but it is separated there. A lot of the, most of the large amounts of food waste come from sometimes small businesses, restaurants, coffee shops. Uh, I would be in support of uh giving these businesses incentives in which to operate and separate the food waste from the hard garbage or the hard contaminant type of uh, type of trash. Not only in addition to that, if you realize that we have more waterways and more shoreline than any county in the nation. In addition to that, we do not have a styrofoam recycling opportunity here, which is the number one contaminant to our water system.
Thank you. All right, this will be the last question. Um, if Kitsap County were to receive a $10 million grant that could be used in any way, how would you propose that it be spent? And first will be Laomi.
It's true to my heart and it's the number one issue that I'm running for. It would go into affordable low-income housing. It would go in making sure that we have solutions for everyone that likes, and allows to call Kitsap County home, to remain here and, and to be able to create the future and the opportunity that they desire. For me, housing is, is the pivotal foundation for any other type of solution to, to go ahead. If we're not able to create those solutions to be able to make sure that people are able to attain the quality of life that they have. that they have been working so hard to do, then we as a government are failing. We are not allowing our community, our neighbors, to be able to have life liberty in the pursuit of happiness first and foremost. And it's also be being able to accept and be respectful of persons self-somerty and making sure that ultimately, at the end of the day, we are able to recognize that people are their own best experts. And sometimes they just need a helping hand in being able to attain those goals and wishes that they want to. So first and foremost, it would be to make sure that people have permanent stable housing, that then they can build their futures and dreams on.
Thank you, Katie.
Well, wouldn't that just be amazing? A ten million dollar grant, and I would put the money towards workforce development. I think right now, everything is so strained. Talking to HR in Kitsap, Kitsap County HR, they said there was a silver tsunami, that they're expected it, but it was COVID, everything hit at once. So I really think investing education to our workforce would be really vital to fill all the positions in the parks and the sheriff's office, uh, in transit. I am right now, I'm part of the organizational leadership resource management advisory committee at Olympic College. I'm working with workforce development to hopefully bring a criminology program to Kitsap, working with the sheriff's office. We have a legislator that's interested in this as well as the college to really be innovative in what we can bring with education to Kitsap County so that we are raising our own employees right here, working with the trades, working to, uh, encourage people to fill a lot of these unfilled jobs. And it would be great for the economy as well as giving the having employment is good for mental health. It, uh, I'm, my time's up, but I could go on and on, the workforce development.
Thank you. Jeff.
There are numerous places where Kitsap County could spend ten million dollars. I have a little bit better, different viewpoint than most. Um, I'm seeing the direct impacts of the drug impact, drug epidemic on our community and the end result of addiction, which is many times death. And so we need to, if we had that kind of money that we could spend any way we wanted, I would greatly encourage spending that on all facets of addiction treatment, whether that from inpatient to outpatient to community counseling to help ensure that these folks that right now, they really don't have any other outlet. And that's why they're turning to foreign substances. And the addiction factor that we have right now is causing untold deaths. So that would be, that would be the Christmas present to me, would be able to provide that treatment.
Thank you, Axel.
Thank you. Um, yeah, ten million dollar gift. Well, we need to look at that as a immediate prioritization of our current needs. You know, there's a lot of great ideas out here, but our community needs needs those addressed immediately. Uh, I wouldn't, I would address, uh, housing opportunities in conjunction with addressing the unhoused individuals to create a measurable and attainable goals to return these individuals back to contributing members of our society. I would also spend some of that funds, that grants in supporting our law enforcement and giving them the ability to get our communities safe again and have families feel safe when they go to the grocery store, shopping center, or open parks.
Thank you, and Josh.
Well, I'm a nonprofit guy, so this answer wouldn't surprise you. I would take the ten million dollars. I'll double it to twenty million because I'll offer it as a matching grant to organizations in our community that do great work. Uh, I think we can do four different things with that money. One is a trade school. So work with Kitsap Builders Association. They want trades. They need employees. Let's match what they can invest and what they can raise to be able to put a trade school in Kitsap. Transitional housing opportunities and affordable housing for people who need it. The number one way to get people out of homelessness is to get them housed, so let's work on that. The third thing, help Kitsap Transit leverage their money to provide more transportation, uh, in our community. Sometimes a shot in the arm of funding like that, where they can get matched with other government grants gives them the ability to, uh, explode exponentially the services that they provide. And then lastly, law enforcement, I'm hearing consistently, we want more training. We want, uh, the ability to buy cameras. They can't afford some of these things. So being able to inject them with that funding would be an incredible, uh, opportunity.
All right, thank you. All right, um, we're going to move to our closing remarks and, um, first person will be Katie for that. Do you have a minute and a half?
Well, thank you, thank you, Robin, for this evening and Lake of Women voters and for our audiences who stuck with us this evening and those viewing from home. I am passionate about fostering and empowering more women leaders in our community and decided that this is the best way to do that is to lead by example. I helped found, I found the LIFT, uh, Kitsap Women's Leadership Network during COVID because women have really felt the brunt of the responsibilities of COVID. And LIFT based on the women, Melinda Gates quote, uh, "When you lift up women, you lift up all communities." So I think it's a really important to, uh, represent the women voters. My mom was a city commissioner when I was growing up and she took me to League of Women Voter Meetings when I was in high school and I was in college. So, um, thank you for inspiring the next generation of community leaders and voters. Thank you. Um, and I really, I look forward to using my experience and my connections to create solutions to Kitsap's most pressing issues. I'm a collaborative leader. I have connections across Kitsap. I look forward to activating my network of community leaders and really bringing everyone into that process to be representative of, uh, all aspects of Kitsap County. Growth is coming and I I want to work with you to develop community-based solutions for sustainable growth and development that balances our natural environment and our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you for putting this on tonight and thank you for this opportunity to be here. I am the person that comes to you with the proven track record in a short amount of time as being a person of action. Um, I have come into public office in Kitsap County for an office that most people don't think about until they really need it. Um, and then when they do need it, it needs to operate seamlessly. And people have a great amount of trust that that is taking place and it's a shock to them when it's not. So I have taken that trust. I've built upon that. And I have followed through on everything that I've said I was going to do. And I've worked very collaboratively and effectively with our other community leaders and other people that are in elected positions and positions of authority over the coroner's office to effect that change and bring the benefit to Kitsap County. I'm more than ready and able to bring that to the Board of County Commissioners as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Axel.
Yes, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Over the years, I have worked tirelessly. I've delivered many great results to much success here in Kitsap. I'm the only candidate who has the experience, uh, in the public sector as well as the private sector and the track record to address the challenges that we face today here in Kitsap. My relationships with the commissioners, other legislators in our neighboring counties as well give strength to my ability to address regional as well as state level issues, which may be needed here in Kitsap to strengthen our position. I bring proven leadership, proven results, as well as fiscal responsibility and accountability to the position at a time that is critical here in Kitsap. As your county commissioner, I'll continue this prioritizing work, public work, excuse me, prioritizing public safety, the unhoused and growth while respecting the environment. Thank you, and I appreciate the support. I look forward to representing Kitsap and will maintain and continue to build our communities, making them safe and the place that we all love and live.
Thank you, uh, Josh.
Thank you to League of Women Voters. Thank you to those who are watching. Thank you to Robin for hosting. Uh, when I was in foster care as a director, I helped our most vulnerable in our community find solutions to life's biggest problems. I'll spend our money in our community on what we value most. Safety, managed growth, housing affordability, environmental protection, and finding real actionable solutions for those without homes, those struggling with mental health and addiction. I'm a visionary leader. I'm not somebody who's going to spend money on my pet projects. There won't be pickleball portions coming out of my stuff. I'm ready to galvanize Kitsap around a common vision, a vision that can accomplish great things with great leaders, with our community all coming together. We need different styles of leadership than we have today. We need somebody with a nonprofit experience that I bring. I have in touch with the biggest needs of our community within mental health and addiction with real solutions. I've helped people find homes that are affordable. I help people access health. I've also run major corporation business. I know how to deal with big with big budgets, lots of employees. Lastly, I've been volunteering on the county budget committee for three years. I know it well. I know it inside and out. I know how it interworks. And I am focused and dedicated to making sure that Kitsap remains the best place to raise the family, the best place for every single person in our community to thrive and a place where you want to grow up and your kids want to stay because they see this as an incredible place to live.
Thank you, and Leomi.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, everyone here who has appeared to us with us today. You being here shows how much you care about this community, just as much as I care about it. And I first want to thank, say thank you to my grandma for always instilling with me my civic responsibility to be able to be a part of democracy and share my own voice and values. And that is the reason why I decided to run to be your next Kitsap County Commissioner because oftentimes we fail to see other experiences and stories that make our community so great. When we concentrate on making sure that we have low affordable income housing, when we have equitable transportation and infrastructure, when we fully fund our social service programs that assist in making sure that Kitsap keeps moving forward together, that is when we'll be able to see and accomplish the vision that we all have for our community and for the place that we call home. I'm here because I want to be able to amplify and to inspire people to be able to be a part of this process. So that way, when all of the solutions are presented on the table, we don't make wrong decisions that we make equitable, thoughtful, evidence-based decisions that will be able to assist every single one lift and be the best version that they can be. As a person who has has navigated the systems inside and out, we really need to be able to look at each other and be able to really state our values. And I hope that when you fill out your ballot, you think of the most vulnerable person that you know in your life and that you vote in their best interest. And I look forward to serving for you.
Thank you so much. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank all of our candidates for taking the time to be with us this evening. Your answers have been thoughtful and creative and and excellent. So I I do appreciate the time and effort that you all have put into not only running for office, but preparing for events such as this. And I think a well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy. And events such as this are one way that we can learn about our candidates and the people that are running for elected office. Um, our primary election is August second. We've got to put it in that plug. Um, the ballot should be mailed by July fifteenth. You should already have your voter guide. And if, um, your ballot will need to be returned by August second. And it is needs to be either postmarked by August second or put into the ballot box by that time. Um, if you need information on candidates and, um, issues, you can get that at vote411.org or in your voter pamphlet, which, um, as I said, you should have already received in the mail. The pamphlet can also be accessed online at kitsap, kitsapgov.com/auditor. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I would like to encourage everyone to please vote and have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
My pleasure.
Have a great evening, y'all.
You too.